A little bit around on the agenda, not the subject matter but the order. I know John Daigle needs to go somewhere this evening, so John, if you wouldn't mind taking the first shot at your proposal. That's item ten point three on the agenda.
As you're aware, we purchased a new five fifty and a three fifty plow truck. They didn't come equipped. Prices have gotten for the five fifty is thirty-five thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. That's plow, wing, sander, hydraulic controls. And the one they've gotten for the pickup is thirty-six thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. This is all equipped. Plow, sanders.
The five fifty, you haven't spent, what do you call it? One of those Rex Roth control boxes?
No.
Off the old truck or?
No. It's cable control, the five fifty. Reason five fifty can be cable controlled because there's a dump body on it. And when you put a dump body on a frame, you have to also have a subframe. So you have room in between for the controls. That's why you see there says cable controls. The pickup, you can't let the body up. So that's electronic.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the difference.
Before we make a motion, are there any other questions you might have? Anybody have about the F five fifty?
Was that roughly about what we figured it would be in the budget?
Actually, it's less.
Less, okay.
Both trucks.
I just couldn't remember. I knew it was in the budget. I just couldn't remember exactly what the numbers were.
Anyone else? Okay. So I'd entertain a motion for what you're saying plow equipment for the F three fifty at three six thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. And the F five fifty for thirty-five thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. So moved. For a second? Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good night, John.
Yep. All right. Go back to the informal order here.
Sorry.
No, I understand. We have two public hearings scheduled this evening. And I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Public hearing is open for a liquor license request for Walderboro Public Library. Actually, it's for Narrows Tavern as well, I think. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. And you are going to provide the license number for the Narrows Tavern?
Got it.
You got it?
Got it.
Okay, good. Any public comment on this particular application? All right. I'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion to act on the liquor license?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And we'll open another public hearing for liquor license and special amusement permit for Sweeney Todd Incorporated, Todd Mank, DBA Bullwinkle's Family Steakhouse. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? So moved. There's a second?
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing is open. Any public comments on Bullwinkle's application?
What are they doing?
They are.
What?
It's a.
Liquor license, isn't it?
No, no. No, no. It's a.
Oh, music?
Yeah.
Oh, I have.
It's a. It's for a restaurant lounge class eleven, X one, that the application is for. That means they serve spirituals, wine and beer.
It's what they've always had.
Yeah. And no change. Diagram is the same as it's always been.
And the police had no issues.
Police had no issues. Yeah. Any further questions or comments on this liquor license? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any further? Okay, all in favor? All right, good. Presentation is marked. He's going to talk about the recreation department survey.
So back, I guess, a little over a year ago now, the select board created a recreation committee. And our charge was to determine the want and need of a recreation center in Walderboro. So we got together as a committee and we came up with a survey that we sent out to all two thousand four hundred and eighty households. And this is just an overview of the responses that we got back. So I'll go ahead and go through the PowerPoint. And if you have any questions, feel free. So as I said, we sent out two thousand four hundred and eighty surveys. We got three hundred and eighty-eight back, which is a response rate of fifteen point six percent. A normal response rate on a survey is around ten percent. So we feel we did pretty well with that, above getting it back. Now we'll go through each question. Question one was just, are you a resident of Walderboro? Of the three hundred and eighty-eight, three hundred and eighty-one, were yes. Seven of them were either a no or blank. Some of the no's included business owners that had P O. boxes in town or mailboxes. And then some of them were just left completely blank. So those were as well. Question two, in what age range do the heads of your household fall? This one came in, forty percent came in at sixty-five plus, which was our biggest age range. We only had two percent in the eighteen to twenty-five, ten percent twenty-six to thirty-five, sixteen at thirty-six to forty-nine, and thirty-one fifty to sixty-four. And then we had five that left it blank. So that, yeah, that's the age range of the people that returned the survey. Please choose the options that best describe your household occupants. Sixty-three percent of the people that returned the survey have a household with no children, eighteen or younger. That kind of tends to line up pretty well, considering that the majority of the surveys we got back were from people sixty-five plus. But we did have thirty-six percent that did have children and another five that were left blank. Question four was a big one. I gave you a copy of our blank survey. It's the one with all the, excuse me, the options of, you know, what are you interested in or what do you want to participate in? And some people circled one or two, some people didn't circle any, some people circled almost all of them. So we had three hundred and sixty-seven that circled at least one or more, which is ninety-five percent of the surveys we were returned. People were interested or wanted to participate in those activities. Twenty-one percent were left blank, or twenty-one were left blank, five percent. The top five answers were walking. We had two hundred and seventy-five, swimming, cooking, music, and fitness. So that's kind of the top five of what people wanted to do or are already doing. Question five, what Walderboro recreation programs have you participated in over the past year? Only nineteen percent said they've used Walderboro Rec in the last year. That is seventy-five. If you think nineteen percent, I think the, if we went back and looked at the age range or the people with children, thirty-six percent of the people with children, this is about half of them, would be using it probably. Or, and then also the people that don't have children, but they use our adult ed, our adult or senior programs. But a lot of them don't, which was interesting. What non-Walderboro Rec programs have you participated in over the past year? Forty percent do something else. A lot of the big answers were C L. C. or Pen Bay Y. or the fitness center here in town. There were a lot of different options. People were hiking and hunting and stuff like that on their own, fishing. Then we also had sixty percent that do no other rec. And I don't know why that is. It could be they're not interested in it, or it's, they don't feel there's anything locally that's available to them that interests them. But it's definitely an interesting statistic. Question seven, this is one of the biggest ones that we looked at. Sorry. How important are the following? Walderboro needs a recreation center. Seventy-eight percent of the surveys we got back said that they either strongly agree or agree that Walderboro needs a recreation center. Five percent disagreed, and then twelve percent strongly disagreed. And then we had five percent that didn't answer or left it blank. So that was kind of a big one that we looked at, because it's a pretty blunt question. Question eight, how important are the following? Health, wellness, and quality recreation are important to your enjoyment of Walderboro. Again, we had pretty good numbers for, in favor, eighty-two percent either strongly agree or agree that health, wellness, and quality recreation are important here in Walderboro. Four percent disagreed, eight percent strongly disagreed, and six percent no, didn't answer. Number nine, how important are the following programs for all ages? Our programs for all ages are important. Right here, we had eighty-seven percent strongly agree or agree, two percent disagree, eight percent disagree, and three percent unanswered. With question eight and nine, as far as, you know, is health and wellness and recreation important? And is it important for all ages? Those were our highest percentage, strongly agree and agree. Everyone seemed to be, for the most part, in favor that these are important things here in Walderboro. Question ten, how important are the following? Having onsite healthcare or childcare while using the recreation center is important. Sixty-three percent strongly agree or agree, fourteen percent disagree, thirteen percent strongly disagree, ten percent unanswered. This one was more even keeled. There were a lot of people that wrote strongly agree or agree, but wrote next to it, you know, I don't have kids, I won't use it, but I can see why it's important, so that's why I'm putting strongly agree. And then we had people put N. A. or unanswered for the same reason, they said they wouldn't use it. But for, again, the majority, it was a positive. Question eleven is a big one. This moves into, what priority level would you give the following spaces in a recreation center? So as we look, if, you know, if we want to build something, what do we want in it? And so I came up, there were ten different possibilities, and they could rank them between not needed and high priority. So below, excuse me, I'm sorry. Below are the top five and bottom five as far as answers. An indoor walking and jogging track was our highest answer of strongly agree or high priority with two hundred and seventy. A teen activity area, group exercise, gymnasium, and onsite outdoor multi-use recreation space. The bottom five, the least, we start from the bottom, multipurpose rooms, kitchen area, swimming pool, multipurpose floor, and free weights were among the bottom. You can see free weights at five and at the bottom five and out onsite, multi-use recreation space. There was only two, two surveys different that were pretty close there in the middle. But that's kind of how the surveys we got back prioritized. We have a chart on the next slide here that breaks it down even more. Our top answer was indoor walking. See that? Two hundred and seventy people thought it was a high priority or priority, that we have some space inside to walk, especially in the wintertime. But other things, gymnasium was popular. The one that was the most hot and cold was the swimming pool. It had the second highest high priority, but it also had the most not needed by a significant margin. Seventy-five not needed, as opposed to the other ones were in the forties and fifties. So that one was very hot and cold. Some people, I had surveys that came in that said, if there's no swimming pool, don't build it. And then I had a lot that came in that said, you know, we could use a recreation center, but we don't need a swimming pool. And so that's how it all kind of breaks down with every response that we got. I said most of them were in the middle, but the indoor walking space was definitely the highest priority. Question twelve, how much would you be willing to pay in a yearly family membership for a new recreation center? We had twenty-one percent that left it blank, eighteen percent that marked as zero, twenty-three percent that marked somewhere in the twenty-five to a hundred dollar range, twenty-one percent in the hundred and twenty-five to two hundred dollar range, and seventeen percent in the two hundred and twenty-five plus range. So that breaks down as sixty-one percent are willing to pay something. And then if you add the blanks and the zeros, it's thirty-nine percent who are willing, who are not willing to pay anything for a yearly family membership. The next one is a buddy membership. The numbers are pretty much the same, a little bit different. Fifty-nine percent as opposed to forty-one percent, but it's all broken down in the same categories, right in that, most of them right in that ten to twenty percent range. How much would you be willing to pay in a yearly individual membership for a new recreation center? So the individual, thirty-five percent at willing to pay nothing or blank, and sixty-five percent zero. This one was a little bit higher. Again, with the age ranges that we got back, sixty-five plus, the buddy one and the individual one were a little bit higher, not so much with the family. But that tends to line up with the age group that we got back. Question fifteen, how much of an annual tax increase would you be willing to pay in order to build slash maintain a recreation center? This one was more in the middle. Fifty-five percent were willing to pay something, and forty-five percent were not. We had seventeen percent left blank, twenty-eight percent at zero, thirty-five percent in the ten to a hundred dollar range, ten percent in the hundred and twenty-five to two hundred, and ten percent in the two hundred and twenty-five plus. So looking back at these four questions, while most people answered these questions completely, so like they marked out what they would be willing to pay for an individual membership, they marked out what they'd be willing to pay for a buddy membership, individual, family, and taxes. Some people didn't. Some people just filled it out if, you know, if they were, the example I put on here, in the sixty-five plus age range and they're just living at home with their spouse, they only filled out the buddy one or the single one. If they're, you know, they didn't fill out the family one. So a lot of them were left, a lot of them that were left blank were not all left blank. Out of the three hundred and eighty-eight surveys, two hundred and ninety-seven of them put some form of payment in, in the survey in one of those questions. Ninety-one out of the three hundred and eighty-eight surveys was left blank or willing to pay zero for all of them. So that lines up. That means that seventy-seven percent of the people who were surveyed were willing to pay some form of membership or higher taxes to make it a reality. And then twenty-three percent of those surveyed were against paying for a recreation center. If we go back to question seven, then does Walderboro need a recreation center? I think it was seventy-eight percent that said we do, strongly agree or agree. So that lines up pretty well with that. Question sixteen, we start to move in, these were open-ended questions, like essay questions almost. What would you expect to receive for your membership? Why these are separated? The number one answer was access to the facility. Must have been, I didn't count up the percentage, but it must have been seventy-five to eighty percent of the people that filled out this question answered they wanted access. Some wanted free classes with their membership, but the common theme was access. Other answers were access or discounted classes and then a clean facility. Question seventeen, are there any other programs, amenities, or recreation opportunities you would like to see? The number one answer we had was a pool. Like I said, it was the, in our, what does the recreation center need? I love the hottest and coldest topic, but the people that are for it are, were very blunt about it in their survey response. It was, they, something they really wanted. And we also had yoga, skate rink, hiking trails, indoor walking in the winter. The indoor walking in the winter lines up with, you know, the number one thing that people wanted in a recreation center. And also, walking was the number one in participation, were interested in participation in question four. Last question was eighteen additional comments. Most of the comments that we got back were positive. They basically went along the lines of a wonderful or fantastic idea, long overdue or good luck. The ones that weren't positive were basically that the taxes are already too high and we shouldn't be thinking about this, was basically the common theme. Some people said, you know, they wouldn't use it, but for the most part, it was about the taxes or payment. So what would a recreation center mean for the recreation department? I went over this this week. It's extra gym space. I put for youth sports, but as you go down, it's pretty much for everything. We added pickleball recently. We're using the First Baptist Church to do that, because we have a lot of activities we want to do during the day, but we don't have gym space because the kids are in school and we're not allowed to be there. The kids are using it for phys ed and lunch and all that other stuff. So, you know, we're using our other resources in town, but having our own facility would make running daily programs a lot easier. So a place for more senior and other programming during the day, a place for town functions, where it'd be rented out for private parties, more open gym times for teens and adults. I always have people coming to me looking for open gyms for basketball, but there's just not space with the schools. The school, the way the school works is that if there's a school function, they have priority of their gym. I use Miller Gym a lot. I use the high school and middle school some. But the school has the first priority, and then after that, we get what's left. But a lot of that, November to March, youth basketball's in there, they take up every time slot. Like if I have an adult group that comes to me and wants to do something at night, there's no space. I have to go in before the season starts and reserve a space just in case somebody wants to do something, or otherwise I won't have a place for other programs, because they're just, it's just limited that way. More programmer, and also more programming opportunities would be available, because we'd have our own facility and a place to do it, especially in the wintertime, we'd be able to add a lot more programs and offer a lot more things for citizens. So based on the results of the survey, the recreation committee recommends that the town move forward in a pursuit of a recreation center, based on the findings that seventy-eight percent of those surveyed believe a recreation center is needed in Walderboro, and eighty-two percent believe health, wellness, and quality recreation are important to Walderboro. This lines up with the seventy-seven percent of those surveyed willing to pay a membership and/or higher taxes to make this a reality. Obviously, we have a long way to go, and there's more that needs to be found out, but our charge was to find out if a recreation center was wanted or needed and is feasible in Walderboro. And that this is what we've come up with so far. So that's the end of my presentation. So if you have.
Thank you.
A big thank you to you, want to send to your committee, all the hard work they've done to make the survey a reality, this helpful information. And it ties into.
Very much so.
What we've been talking about.
Yep. Very much so.
Yep. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda tonight? Okay. Citizen comments? Any citizen? Yes, sir.
So I'm Andy Lackoff of Walderboro. I have a prepared statement, so I'm just going to read it. I'm aware that Walderboro is considering the adoption of LED street lighting. It is currently evaluating its current system and options to transition to LED. I know you are well aware of the efficiency of LED and how a new system will use less electricity, reduce our carbon footprint, and save money for the town, and I applaud this effort. There are some other points I would like to be considered during the process. I am very interested in the night sky and look up a lot throughout the year. From where I live on Washington Road and look to the south and to the west, light pollution even here in rural Maine is apparent. Of course, there are other towns and larger towns to the south, but Walderboro contributes its share, and it all adds up and causes sky glow, especially along the Route One corridor. Much of this is due to private and business lighting, and we are not addressing that, at least not now, but it all adds up. Light pollution does a number of things. There is the obvious that it obscures the night sky. It is found to be bad for health, contributing to insomnia and chronic disease such as depression, diabetes, possibly cancer. It is bad for wildlife and ecosystems. It wastes electricity, which of course increases carbon emissions. LED lighting is a great modern technology. At the same time, modern LED tends to be very bright. But there are choices, so I am asking for a few simple considerations as the planning goes forward. That lighting be shielded so that it is directed downward? That warmer colors be chosen to minimize the blue light end of the spectrum, which largely contributes to the problems I mentioned? And possibly design a system where the output of the lights can be controlled and timers be installed so some can be shut off or minimized during non-peak times? Note that Portland has addressed these issues when upgrading their municipal lighting, and I can provide a reference to an article about that if interested. The International Dark Sky Association is an excellent resource for information and even has a list of dark sky approved fixtures. I would be happy to provide some short references. I have no expertise, but would be happy to help out in any way I can. Thanks for listening.
Thanks for talking. Yeah?
Evening. It's Seth Paul, as you all know. I have a couple of unrelated thoughts, and I support the last speaker's comments about the glare and the upward projection, but I think the technology that you're considering already addresses most of those things, so it's not a huge problem. As some of you know, I've been working my hardest on expanding employment and business in town with some notable success. And it's created a parking issue. We now have a whole bunch more people parking at the tax building like former days, I guess, as we all know. And I just wanted to ask that the town be vigilant and aware of the much increased use of the rear lot. There's nothing wrong with it, it's just fine. But it will need to be plowed and so forth during the winter, because we have a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five call center operation back in that building. So it's going to be important that the employees could get to it. We, of course, will take care of the shoveling on the property and the decks and the walkways and so forth. And related to parking, Kat Scove and I have had a conversation, following a conversation with Bob, about the paving of the main street in town directly across from the library in particular. As many of you know, it's sort of grown wider over the years, and the state has basically paved what has been ad hoc taken. And Kat raised a really interesting problem, and that's line of visibility for people coming out of the library parking lot. It's really difficult, and I would agree, it is difficult. They can't see up the hill when people are parked basically in front of the Kennedy House, which is adjacent property. And the width of the new breakdown lane or parking lane, whatever you want to call it, equivalent, makes it worse. And I just thought, I threw out the idea, we talked a long time ago about the potential for curbing when they were doing the draining, just adding some curbing to sort of control not only the Kennedy House property, but the library property, which is all the little front grass, or what do you call that, via in front of the library, is increasingly encroached upon as people turn and park on the grass. It's an appropriate place for curbing, I think. We have curbing down the hill, and it very nicely controls and looks good. is increasingly encroached upon as people turn and park on the grass. It's an appropriate place for curbing, I think. We have curbing down the hill and it very nicely controls and looks good, controls the traffic. So I would encourage us to think about that. I think it's a relatively low-cost improvement to the town. And lastly, I noticed that the website is going to be updated, which I think is a terrific idea. It's timely, and Liam did a great job, but it, it's time to do that, as you all know. I'm concerned about the note that we're going to reduce the amount of online data. Data these days is incredibly cheap to store on the cloud, which is where the website data will be. Reducing the amount of public access to historical data, in my strongly felt opinion, is exactly the wrong way to go. We want to increase the citizens' and public's access to all of our data. It just makes a whole lot of sense. And I know something about networking and cloud infrastructure, and I know it's really not very expensive. And I think it would be a mistake to cut down even the data we already have. I would like to see it expanded. Meeting notes, minutes, agendas, things like that. Relatively low-cost solution, and I hope we don't go in the wrong direction in the 21st century. I think that would be a serious mistake. Thanks.
Thank you, Seth. Young lady in the back.
Hi, I'm Dion Fuglizo. I live in Waldaborough. I live on Chapel Road. And I'm actually really glad that you brought up the website. Because I, y'all can imagine, as I'm sitting in my house on Saturday morning before going to work, I was reading the newspaper, which I'm so glad exists, and it was telling me about how Waldaborough is going to have a new website. And it's really exciting, except for I live on Chapel Road, and I'm one of very few people in the town that do not have access to the internet. And so, as you're talking about access to data and access to information, you all know the stories, and so this is nothing new. But it was a little bit of a slap in the face to just once again feel like here's another way in which I am being limited as a, as a citizen of this town. I know that the CTC met yesterday and is moving forward on asking the residents of Chapel Road to meet with LCI and financially burden some of the costs of extending internet to Chapel Road. And you bet, I'll be there. I'll be at that workshop. I will pound the pavement. I will do whatever I need to do in order to get internet. But I just want to say I'm sad that the town feels like you have run out of options. I feel sad that we haven't been able to figure out a way to hold Spectrum accountable to an agreement that we have been in compliance with, the nine houses per mile for a very long time. That all of this, it just makes me sad. And I'm, I'm sorry that we've come to this and know that we're not going to give up because, as you know, internet is incredibly important to us, I'm sure, and hope that all of you benefit from it at your house. And know that we still want it, we still need it, and we will be there, and we will show up and we do the work. And we also hope that you're not going to completely walk away. And we won't let you because we think it's only fair that you help us through figuring this out and make sure that we have access to the website like everybody probably in this room does. And thank God we have the library. I go there, and I go there to work on my nursing homework. But I should be able to do that at my house. So I just want to say thanks for your work over the years on it, and it's not over. And we'll be there to keep working on it, but it's not over. Thanks.
Kat's in the back.
Hi.
Can I talk?
Catherine, please.
Catherine Scove. I first want to thank you for approving the liquor license for Oktoberfest this Saturday. I want to clarify that it's not a Waldaborough Library event. Oktoberfest Waldaborough is just a very tiny group of four of us putting together this event, and we needed to buddy up with a five oh one C three to do some of the legal things. So it's just basically a community, a citizen event for the town of Waldaborough. Kind of a fall, not quite an equivalent of Waldaborough Day, but along the same intent that it be a celebration for the citizens of Waldaborough. Admission is free so that everybody can be there. We're celebrating Waldaborough's German heritage, first of all. And second of all, again, an excuse or a way to get people from town together, a community event to bring everyone together. What will be happening, and also what's very important is if it rains on Saturday, the rain date is Sunday. So if everyone here would just pray for sun, we could use that. So what's happening that day is we do have a beer garden, which the liquor license is for, but that's because when you have an Oktoberfest, you have to have a beer garden. But that, to me, is almost kind of an aside because we've tried to make this a very family-friendly event, something for all ages. So for kids, there are going to be two puppet shows, a magic show, sack race, quickie decorating, pumpkin decorating. We're going to have a giant Jenga game and cornhole for all ages. For adults, we're having a barrel roll race, and we're trying to do all these traditional German things. We're having a beer tray relay, and we're having a Nagelbalken game, which is a German nail game. And we'll see who here is really strong in town. We're going to have music all day provided by the, I can't remember if it's the German Oktoberfest Band or the Oktoberfest German Band. They're going to provide a couple of hours of music. We're going to have Kat Logan, and we're going to have Rusty Hinges. And we're going to have Morse's Sauerkraut there with some really wonderful offerings for food. Victory Ice Cream will be there. Narrows Tavern will be there with hamburgers and hot dogs. Barstow Farms is right there on the premises, and she's going to be offering all her usual pizzas and calzones and sandwiches and a hot dish. And there'll be beverages for all ages. And so it should be a really good time for everyone. I hope to see you there.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other comments from the public? Select board comments.
Oh, I just, just one little one. Summer is nearing the end, which I don't, I don't relish at all. I don't like to see the winter come. But anyways, if you see the flower pots disappearing from the, down at the public landing, it's because we're taking them in for the winter. So don't be alarmed, and nobody's stealing them. We're taking them in to clean them up and get them ready for next year. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm also, Jen?
Well, I'd just like to mention sometimes it's the little things that really make for the big things. I live on Jefferson Street, and when I go to work in the morning, I go right down to the corner of Jefferson and Route One. And the garden there, the, this median strip, the island, has been just wonderful all summer. And all of a sudden, mums have come up in there just to add to the beauty. And the colors have changed, and I just have to tell you, it's a wonderful way to start one's day. When I come home, I have to stop again right in front of the island to turn to go home. So I start my day and I end my day looking at that island. And I'd like to thank the garden club and all the people who do that. The mums out front, the doors that you came in today, and those planters, garden club. The, there are mums out by the sign. And, and one other thing, when you come in here to the counter, there's always a display that's done there to the right, when you're standing there right on the right, and it changes. And that's, I can never remember her name. I can see her face.
Jerry Hungerford.
Right, Jerry Hungerford does that. And she does that because she wants to. And she's very talented and is able to put together something that, it always makes me smile when I look at it. So sometimes it's just those little beauty things that puts a smile and brings some joy to, to those of us who live here. And I'd just like to thank the garden club. They've done a wonderful job this year, and they need more people.
Yes, I was just going to say, come on down. We need more people.
I've got two things I'd like to mention. One is that Tim Wells, who's the fellow who's looking to develop the AD Gray property, is going to hold a meeting at the Waldaborough Public Library on October sixteenth from eight to seven thirty. He has sent out, he has a list of folks who live in the, in the vicinity that he's sending out invitations to, but I wanted also to mention that this evening, so people are aware of it. And if they have an interest in what's going on with, or potentially going on with AD Gray, they can attend the meeting and ask Tim questions and give him feedback.
Would you clarify the times on that?
Yep. October sixteenth from six, did I say?
You said eight.
Sorry.
Just a little confusing.
Thank you. I had eighteen hundred hours written down in my notes. That was my bad. So it's to be military about eighteen hundred hours to seventeen, to nineteen thirty hours, or six to seven thirty.
Will that be on our website?
I hadn't, no, it's not a town-sponsored event. This is something that Tim is doing on his own. So.
Can you give us any background on that?
I'm sorry?
Can you give us any background on that to hit our appetite if we want to go or not?
It is, I, I will give you more information later in the meeting. We have the AD Gray Subcommittee as a topic of discussion, so more information will be forthcoming. There's also, we've had this, this has been around a bit, but the Efficiency Main Trust has come out finally, I believe. They, they made, put their toe in the water a while back in the spring, but now it looks like they're actually coming out and asking for proposals to purchase, host, purchase, install, and operate public Level Two EV chargers to serve electric vehicles at locations throughout Maine where there's a high likelihood of significant use and longevity. So if there are folks in Waldaborough who have an interest in this, please contact the town office.
Max.
And Max, thank you. It's your, it's your baby, Max, to see what might be organized, if people have an interest. And that's all I have. Thank you. Town manager, you're reporting.
Well, first, I just want, like, to say Beth Birmingham has been absolutely wonderful to work with, and she is, is that okay to say? Going off to pursue other things in her life. And I just wanted to say that it has been an absolute pleasure to work with you. And your level of interest in our river and our people of the town, aside from all the things that the government does, has just been wonderful, and we greatly, greatly appreciated your service.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So we have a lot going on. We still have a police officer position open. The Water Utility Committee had some recommendations that will be on the next meeting, I'm hoping, to make. We did go for the first time ever. We are selling our used equipment that would otherwise just be put in the paper or on the website to sell. We are on an online auction. And we are auctioning off our, our first used equipment, which is Hearst extrication equipment. The last time I looked, it's around eight hundred dollars, and we had seventy-four looks and fifty-one watchers. So that's exciting. It ends on the sixteenth, and it's normally the last, like, fifteen minutes where you get money, but the bids go up. But I really think that this, and it's, we've never done this in Waldaborough. This is a first. So it's a great way for us to get rid of our unused equipment, and the proceeds of that sale will be returned to that department's capital fund. So that's pretty exciting. We have our follow-up to our forum on October sixteenth. Everything was sent out about that. Our audit is in from FY seventeen, so if you'd like to see that, I put a copy in everybody's box. The next meeting will be going over the personnel policy that I provided for you this evening, and that's what I got.
Thank you very much. Consent calendar, is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I'd like to point out one thing on the consent calendar. There is correspondence, correspondence from the Department of Transportation. It has to do with paving Route One from a point that is point zero, 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 seven miles east of East Pond Road, extending three point three one miles east. So that will go into Wal-, even though it starts in Nobleboro, it will go into Waldenborough. And the construct, the bids will go out in February of 2021. Construction will be the summer of 2021. I know that's a way down the road, but people probably already know about that well in advance. Because if there are issues that occur to them, like curves or other things they'd like to talk to the DOT about, now is the time to start talking to them. There was something in the letter that I didn't fully understand. John has gone, but maybe you could shed, shed some light. It does say, "No permit to open this segment of highway will be granted for a period of three years after the new pavement has been, pavement has been placed."
Correct.
What does that mean?
That means you're not allowed to cut a hole in the road after it's paved.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, if something horrific happens, then yes, but you're not going to be able to get a street opening permit for that.
So the word "open" means?
Oh, open.
Cutting across, cutting across it with something?
Correct.
Whatever. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
That's why they do all the culverts. It's a first.
All right. So any other discussion regarding the consent calendar?
There's some, I saw correspondence here.
Please, yeah.
This is from Nicholas Hill, graduate of Madam McValley. "I am grateful to be a recipient of the George G. Gethner Scholarship. I would like to thank everyone on the committee for believing in me as I start my new chapter. Sincerely, Nicholas Hill." Thought that was cute. Well done. Nice boy. And then I, I got this, and this is to the town of Waldaborough. That's for everyone. I was kind of excited to see that there. "Your kindness made a difference, and your thoughtfulness touched my heart." Thank you. "For the perfect going-out party, Eileen." "A gift received touched my heart with these words. We don't meet people by accident. They are meant to cross our path for a reason. I want to say thank you for all the many reasons everyone crossed my path while I was here. Eileen."
That's very nice.
It was very nice.
Are we ready to vote on the consent calendar? All in favor? Thank you. New business.
We're going to have to wait because Max stepped out, unless Paul, Paul can do it. Paul can do it.
Paul can talk. This is the King.
Go fetch him.
He wants a buddy.
He wants a buddy. He needs a buddy. You're up.
Yep, sorry about that.
The King Foundation Grant.
Yes.
Grab your other stack of papers. You can tell them we're definitely working them hard.
Yep. So, I was approached by, Paul in the back there, about wanting to replace some self-breathing, self-contained breathing apparatuses here in the fire department. There are twenty that would, Paul would like to replace because they are from the nineties, ninety-two and ninety-seven, if I'm correct. And at least five of them were coming with a ladder truck, but that leaves fifteen that we want to try and replace. So Paul came to me, I think, two, three months ago, saying he wants to apply the King Found, the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation. Now, I've spoken with the, the person who's in charge of distributing grants, and she has said that they've done this for SCBA's in the past a lot, so this would qualify. It's just a matter of actually applying and getting a signed letter from the select board stating that you're aware that the money is only to go towards the fire department for this one specific task. Apparently, there's been issues in the past where select boards were just giving the grant out of nowhere, and they thought it was part of the general fund, and they don't want that to happen. So the plan was to ask for thirty thousand dollars. That would get about six SCBA's.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand. What did I say?
He said thirty.
Yep, we're only going to ask for three thousand and get six SBAs. Bargain price.
No, we wouldn't want that.
The rest of the money, and then Paul said that there's some money saved for at least three more to buy next year. So that'd be nine total right there. I'm also looking at a separate grant that I'll come back to get approval for later. That should hopefully get us another four SCBA's. So that leaves three to replace. The options are... The options are having that part of the budget discussion for next year or if you want to just leave it at that, seventeen out of twenty and just have that built up over time. But tonight I just need to make sure you're fine if we apply for King Grants for thirty thousand dollars for six SCBA's. And these are the newer models, by the way. They're about twenty eighteen.
Yeah, these literally, the ones that are coming on the ladder truck, literally didn't get shipped until October first. The models are that new, so they'll be the most up-to-date ones that we could possibly get.
SCBA technically, under NFPA standard, should be replaced every ten years.
And ours should last for twenty.
Some of these were purchased in the eighties.
That was my question, how long? You just need a letter from the Select Board.
Yep, I think, I think I sent one in your.
Packet?
Packet or email. No, I have my own that I'll just have you guys sign before you leave tonight.
If you could give that to me, I can put that in the packet.
Sounds good. So is it select, so that's just the motion I need. Approval for thirty thou-
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Max. All right. Ten point two, ten point two is a little self-serving. I, I've been serving on the Municipal Review Committee Board of Directors since about May. There was a resignation and they needed someone to fit in for this fellow and I wrote a letter and they selected me. They're now entertaining nominations for directors for up to three, for terms of three years. There will be nine of them. And with the board's permission, I would like to re-up as a nominee to continue serving on the MRC Board. The Municipal Review Committee is the entity that looks after the interests of a hundred and fifteen towns that send their solid waste up to the final rate facility in Hamden, Maine. They're ramping up now. They're not in full production yet. They've had to do some things with DEP to get licenses for the product they're producing and selling. They're making product out of garbage. That's what they're doing. And so instead of burning it or sending it to a landfill, it actually gets made into something that primarily industrial corporations have a use for. So this is interesting work and I'd like to try to continue doing it by being on the ballot for the upcoming election. I think it occurs in November or December typically, but I need a motion.
I was gonna do that. That's okay, second. Do you, do you have a five hundred word or less biography to provide? Okay. Well then you're all set.
All in favor? Thank you. I'm up. We've done the quotes for the plow equipment. Space needs in the town office.
So I met with architects yesterday and to give us a proposal on taking a look at this building and telling us how to live better. So I am getting quotes on that, but what would be great is as my department heads and I sit down with these architects, it would be great to have two representatives from the Select Board and Bob had volunteered and Katie had volunteered to sit in on those meetings and I just want to make sure that's good. So I invited three different architects. Two responded and I met with Madomic Design yesterday. Their local, they're in town. Correct. So they've had experience with municipal buildings in the past. Another firm is coming in, having a feeling that they're a little bigger, like a lot bigger. So it'll be interesting to see what they have to say too, but those quotes should come in and then we can proceed from there.
I'd just add that I was on the Comprehensive Command, Committee, Comprehensive Plan Committee and that was when the department heads came in to report and we asked them what their greatest need was. That was a significant need from the police, from the EMS, from, from every, fire, everybody. That was a real common need, so I'm glad that we're doing something about it.
It was on the big, big list of Julie.
Well, there you go.
See, that, that giant list you gave me. So we're taking another one of those.
It may have come right from that comprehensive plan, so good.
Taking the big ones. We have money that was previously budgeted for it. So.
So it was rolled into the.
It, it's in that pot of municipal building money that, one of the reasons that I was saying when we do these things, when we make a motion to, we're gonna earmark something, it really should be written down because that's the problem we're having of, you go back in the minutes, you, we, she spends an inordinate amount of time looking for things that just don't exist in an easily found place, so.
Nice that you're using town, local folks too?
I was really excited about that and they really, Brian's just such a joy and it was, it was a lot of fun to talk to them and they, they totally got what we were saying because I don't want to, it's very easy to say, oh, we need to add on or we need to build a separate building to house a department, but if you look at how we actually live in this building, we don't live well. And we need to have somebody come in and say, hey, this is how you do it. And they'll also make recommendations for all the HVAC, which we have already started working on, but it'll be a much more comprehensive look with somebody who knows what they're doing. I mean, I can look at my office and say, we could move that and save some space and do that differently, but that's not what I do for a living.
So you don't need a motion.
No, but I do need you to acknowledge that Katie and Bob will be sitting in with them, with you.
Is there a motion?
So move.
There are seconds. Second. All in favor? Update on scope of independent appraisal for all three parcels connected to the AD Gray.
You skipped, you skipped one.
Oh, I'm sorry, ten point five.
My schedule of compliance for demolition debris landfill. As you know, the last part of our landfill, the demolition debris portion, if you've been up to the transfer station recently, you'll see there has been a lot of work done, a lot of wood cleaned up. We are closing that officially. Last week, John met with our engineer, Pine Tree Engineering, who's been our engineer for the transfer station in the landfill for a long time. They're coming up with a schedule. The DEP had sent us a compliance schedule. Those dates were not technically in line with when we would reach capacity, so we had to redo those dates. We're going to resubmit that to them with that addendum. So on the next meeting, you will have a full schedule of compliance that we'll have to agree to and send up to the DEP. But that's gonna make significant changes to how we handle our waste.
Yep.
So we do have a transfer committee.
We hope to have a new transfer station committee.
Well, no, no, the meeting we have with the, the board, the management board is already scheduled, but it makes how we handle our waste in the future more important, so hopefully we will have some people apply for the transfer station committing to make recommendations.
Thank you. An update on the scope of the independent appraisal for all three parcels connected to AD Gray property. Do you have anything that you can shed light? I know they did an appraisal back when John Blamey did the study and his group did the study, but that was long.
That was a long time ago.
And if we're gonna, if we, if the Subcommittee about AD Gray is gonna talk about values at some point, we need some guidance and an appraisal would probably be a prudent thing to do. So.
Are you telling me I need to find money for an appraisal?
Well, there, I guess there are two kinds of appraisals. There are two kinds of appraisals. One can be fairly exhaustive. Finding comps for this property is gonna be very difficult. So what's the market value? I don't know. I mean, especially when we've offered the building for a dollar for how many years?
Many.
So I guess I, I'm seeking some guidance from the board on this. What's your thought?
So you don't trust the Times value?
The tax value, the tax assessment. It's one approach.
I mean, it could get expensive doing an appraisal too.
Yep, could.
But if we're gonna sell that property, wouldn't we have to have an appraisal?
I think it would be prudent to have one.
Can we, you know, you're talking the ball field pot potentially. Is that what you're talking as?
It's in the, it's in the mix the developer has created.
Right.
That's, he's made it part of the mix. Doesn't mean we're gonna do it, but he's made it part of the mix.
Until he does that, do we have to have an appraisal? Is that what the developer is looking for? If he's not looking for it, why are we asking for it?
He's not looking for an appraisal.
No, then I wouldn't, why would you do it now until he is actually going to buy it?
Okay.
If that's, you know, it's gonna waste four, five, six thousand dollars to have an appraisal done because this could potentially be commercial, so. I just went through that and it cost me three, thirty-five hundred dollars for a commercial appraisal.
Yep, they're not cheap.
So.
Let us wait.
Want to hold off?
I would hold off. This is.
Until he's, until he's actually looking to buy it, then, then we can move forward.
Okay, old business, LED streetlight.
Did you go find Max again? He keeps leaving. It's almost like he doesn't want to be here.
You heard, his ears were ringing.
His ears were ringing. He does. He got a haircut. Is he?
Am I, if you're talking about this time?
LED lights.
And just a quick note, the person who asked the question left, but I did inform him that the streetlights that we're planning on getting are American Electric Lighting Autobahn Series and they are IDA approved, so they are, they do have that seal approval for the dark sky initiative, just to be clear on that. Thank you. So on the thirtieth, I had a conference call with the project manager of Real Term, the sales director, the development director, and the coordinator of the region. You should have a copy of my notes with the packet that was sent out. Four areas we talked about were the inventory, the installation, slash acquisition, smart controls and maintenance. I probably missed one. But what I'll do is just quickly go through like the quick summary of what each of them were and then kind of get to my point of why I'm here tonight. So for inventory, they want us to have three thousand K lights instead of twenty-seven hundred. They're a bit cooler. They're more white, yellowish lights. They're actually what Rockland, I believe, has right now in the streets. The reason they're at least asking for that is because twenty-seven hundred light fixtures would take about three months to get here, whereas a three thousand would be one month. That's just something with people wanting more three thousand K fixtures. They're a bit more efficient. They are actually something I was initially thinking we should go with. So that's just a quick note I want to put out there.
Sorry, Max, are you talking about the CMP proposal or Real Term?
Real Term.
Okay, I wanna make sure. Thank you.
Then the next part for the inventory was for the library lights. I don't think I've mentioned this yet, but Bob wanted me to make sure to point this out. The library wants to also convert their lights as well to LEDs, but they want to pay for their own lights. So what will happen is Real Term will get a separate value for what it will cost to convert the library streetlights or parking lights. Real Term would prefer we paid it all in one and then the library just reimbursed us, just so there's no confusion.
Things like that in the past.
Yeah, just so there's no confusion with accounts and all that.
Okay.
So that was the first thing, inventory. Is there any questions so far on that? Yes.
Yeah, I was curious. There was discussion in the past a few times about other people not associated with town property, people who have parking lots and things, being able to pile on the same way that the library is interested in doing that. Is there a provision for that? And if so, how is that gonna be handled? Would you, would that be the same reimbursement thing if the board put that?
Yes, but I mean, I can't speak for this, like where they'll make the final decision for when the IGA is written, if there's any changes, but Bob.
Well, the Real Term proposal does allow a pile-on by non-town affiliated entities as long as they pay their own way.
I would, I would assume they would have to do it at the same time that they're here, not just willy-nilly.
Well, I would say, number one, is that we're doing this for a nonprofit who's the library. We're not going to cover the cost for all people to pile on and then pay, right. The library has been on from the beginning, so just bear that in mind.
And the library will pay for their li, own lights. But if there is a business that is interested, I would try and be doing this, I would do the same thing with them where we just have to make an amendment with our eventual IGA saying that there is business interested, so Real Term will just have to make that separate cost. And then we pay for one and then the private entity would have to reimburse the town.
No, that can't be done like that for a private entity.
They would have to pay up.
They would have to pay upfront to Real Term. Right. We can cover the cost of the library because it's a, one of those quasi-public and, but we could pay for it and then there's no, there's no way we can pay for private entities and then be reimbursed.
Okay.
So they just pay the town upfront and then?
They'd have to.
I, I'd have.
I think we're getting way far afield. I think that they would have to.
I'll confirm it, I'll confirm.
Confirm it, but I, I, I don't have a mechanism to cover private entities. I have a, I at least have a hammer for the library. We do give them.
We could offset.
We can offset if they don't pay up.
It's a hybrid, public, private.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
So just that you'd have to check with them.
So I will check with Real Term.
Definitely.
So that was it for inventory, unless there's any other questions?
So just, just a, an aside, and it's an important aside and addresses the point that the word has been out about this for some time.
Yes.
And to my knowledge, not a single private business in Waldenborough has expressed any interest at all in redoing their lights to LED and saving the kind of money that they would save if they did it. I mean, we haven't heard from anybody.
Correct.
So it would be nice to hear from somebody if the newspapers would put that in, please, and to contact Max.
All right, can you say it one more time to the two in the front? All right. So that's inventory. For installation, we've gotten back three bids for qualified, qualified installers that are based in Maine that are CMP approved to do this installation. The first one is On Target from Portland. The second is Hedstrom from Camden and the third is R.L. Todd &amp; Son Electrical from Caribou. We do have a value sheet in front of you. At the top, at the top, you'll see the three prices from each company. Their, the lowest price was On Target for eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-two. Todd &amp; Son was second with nineteen thousand four hundred and two. And then Hedstrom was, was the highest at nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty. So there's about a fifteen hundred difference from lowest to highest. That is based on global price, so they were expected to just reply to doing all six mid-coast towns involved in this project. Not individual prices, but that is the price we would be paying for this, for our share. Next week, I will be going to Camden to speak with the other town or project managers to see if we all have a, an agreement of which installer we want. Because I'm assuming people want the cheapest one, which is On Target, but I also don't know if people want the more local option, which is Hedstrom, even though it is fifteen hundred more. So, yes, Bob.
Hedstrom also does maintenance, doesn't it?
They also, they do. They all do maintenance.
But if the installer is also doing the maintenance later on down the road.
It could help.
That would make sense.
So you'll have that discussion next week.
Yes, and funny enough, I'll get to maintenance in just a minute.
Okay, sorry.
No, it was a good point to bring up, actually. So that's just something I'd like a recommendation for before I leave. And then for maintenance, I actually spoke with Tom, Tom Hedstrom, of Hedstrom, actually. Uh, and then for maintenance, I actually spoke with Tom, Tom Hedstrom, of Hedstrom, actually, just to get an idea of maintenance costs, uh, because if we are buying the streetlights, we do, I doubt we're gonna send someone from our own public works to get certified to do all the, yeah, Julie's already shaking her head even at a dry joke. So we do need to get a third-party maintenance crew, uh, and I assume Hedstrom being right in Camden would probably be the preferred option. Uh, I just got some prices, which would be a hundred and ninety-five per hour. So that's getting us two crew members and a bucket truck to come out and sh- and fix the lights.
I wonder if they hang flags, Paul?
Good question, I'll make sure to ask them.
Is that maintenance, is that hourly maintenance cost covered under the warranty for the first ten years of the lights?
That warranty is only for the fixtures themselves.
Not for the lights?
So if something is bad with the lights, uh, there's a bad wire or something, we get the fixture back for free, but the installation is, uh, a separate cost, yes. But I also just want to point out that these fixtures that we are getting, uh, all other towns I've used as examples, Dover-Foxcroft, Wells, Grand Isle, all the way up in Arustic, I've actually called all three, they have these same models, and the only problem they've had are fuse-related or CMP-related. So I haven't really heard anyone say anything negative about these fixtures, at least just yet. And then smart controls. So, I know that smart controls were something we wanted to look at early on. I haven't found a town example that has had them for a long enough period that I'm comfortable saying we should have these. I think the information and usage it provides are very valuable, especially if we are buying the lights. But I can't definitively say that, I'm not, I can't really throw myself and say this is what we should get, because I am worried it's too new. One of the towns I spoke to this past week was, uh, Grand Isle, again, up in Arustic County, who wanted smart controls when they installed their lights. Unfortunately, they couldn't get the smart controls because they didn't have a good enough cellular coverage. So I don't know if that might be another problem we have to face. Now, they had, now Real Term has offered a workshop if we're interested. So select board members and members of the CTC could, um, speak with the representative from Ubiquia, like I have already, if there's still people on the fence, or if we want to have it, just to ask questions and get to know.
What are the others, do we know what the other six towns are doing that we're in with?
Trying to think through them. Union, I believe, Thomaston is getting the lights, or the smart controls, because they wanted to be able to control the non-Route One lights. Union, I believe, is getting the lights. I don't know about Rockport, because that's a different issue. Camden, I'm not sure, and Rockland, I'm not sure.
We'll, we'll have a better idea next week.
I'll have a better idea next week.
Isn't it true that the lights we would be getting, um, have the capacity to accept smart controls down the road if we decide we want to add them?
Yes, but that would be adding cost onto that.
Of course, yeah, but my, my, my take from the committee, CTC, was that, although intriguing, no one was really interested in having them.
EDC.
Sorry.
EDC.
Communicate, oh, sorry, yes, EDC, Economic Development. No one was really interested in having them, because of the very uncertainties you're talking about.
Right, and again, I think they are, I think the information's very valuable. I think the fact that we can monitor them from a computer is very beneficial. But as I, as you just pointed out, and I'll say it again, there are towns that are gonna get them, and I'm not sure if, I don't have a good example, just to say it again. So we, I would recommend at least doing the workshop, just to ask questions, and maybe there is an example that I'm, uh, not aware of. Probably won't be located in Maine, but it's still probably worthwhile to, uh, worthwhile discussion. It's a free workshop, so I figure might as well at least see it.
What's the cost of the add-on if you decided to get them, not for every light in town, but say for five or six that were located in crucial areas that you wanted to control?
So it would be about thirteen thousand, about fourteen thousand dollars if we were to do all the lights. I mean, I can't give a, I can't give an exact number, really.
About a hundred and ten, twenty dollars per light?
It, yeah, about that. Yep, and that could be an option, too. Some towns apparently have chosen to do a hybrid option for the more residential areas, if they wanted to. So that could be something we discuss.
So like, we keep the dangerous intersections up all the time, but downtown, you might want that control?
Right.
So that can be discussed further.
Okay, well, it would be nice to know if there's anybody out there who's actually bought them, installed them, and is using them and is happy with them. In a cold climate.
Yep. Glad you have made that addition.
Yeah.
So.
They were great in Miami.
They were great in Miami.
They too. Check Caribou.
So the last thing, and this is just the thing I need to get confirmed with the select board, is the acquisition portion. So I have documents that need to be filed with CMP about us wanting to buy the streetlights from them. Now, I've held off on this because I've been told to only focus on the audit, on the audit, and look into the CMP option in case that's something we want to look at or, uh, go with instead.
So now you really have to make the decision whether you want to go with Real Term or CMP.
Or CMP.
Or at that point.
Reason I'm saying that is because yesterday I spoke with, uh, John Fancy, who's doing Thomaston portion. He said he submitted these, uh, documents just to get an invoice back in July. He has still not received that invoice. And the acquisition is, we get the lights when we hand them the check. So once we give these documents, we're still not fully in, but there are, there are a lot of other things I also need to do along with these, this acquisition. I need to get grants written up, I need to get the finance option established. I don't want to go to a mid-coast meeting and say, hey, here's what Walderboro wants if we're not gonna get the lights. So I really just want to know if we're going.
You need direction.
I need, yes.
I want to put you on the hot spot. Do you have a recommendation?
Based on what I have, I would go with, I would go with Real Term. Because solely if we're looking at investments, yes, we do have to pay just to get these new lights installed and get the maintenance crew, there's a little work that has to be done for it. But if we're looking at the fifteen-year lease that CMP has offered us to say, uh, this is what you have to sign if you want to get the lights, we pretty much triple what we save if we go with Real Term.
Yeah.
That was my feeling as I looked at it, there's a better, a much better savings with Real Term. And does Real Term offer, does CMP offer the controls, the smart controls and all of that? That was another issue where I thought the Real Term had more options.
Yeah, that was the second thing I was also gonna say, with Real Term, they will be municipally owned lights, so we do have more control and decision of what we want to do. We do have to keep an eye out for when a storm hits or when CMP comes here, so that we can immediately call whoever our maintenance crew is gonna be to make sure those lights are back up. But let's say we were to go with Hedstrom, for example, it would take maybe one week for those lights to be back up, but the, one or two days in case of an emergency.
Is that what they're willing to contract for?
I'm sorry?
Is that what they're willing to contract for? They're willing to put that in an agreement with us, that if there's an emergency, they'll be out here within two days to fix it?
Doesn't really need to, um, I can ask again about contract, they said they didn't really need to do that. That's the same offer they made every single town in the mid-coast, but I can certainly get a written-up statement.
Okay.
But it would probably have to include inflation as well, just, because a hundred and ninety-five, ten years later, that's probably not gonna be the same. Questions, Seth?
I'm, I'm curious, what does the installation contract come with in terms of installation, maintenance, including things like wiring and so forth for Real Term? What period of time do they say we guarantee these lights to work as we, some contract gets lifted?
Well, first, that's gonna depend on when we sign our IGA. If we get ours next week and we were s- I don't know how long it takes for it to sign, I don't know if you want to send it through committees, or if you just want to sign it right here. Uh, and then the second part is gonna be getting the lights. That's why I mentioned the fixtures earlier, because if we go for those twenty-seven hundred, we have to wait three more months for them just to get here, whereas a three hun- three thousand, they're here. But let's, let's, let's assume, I'm sorry, let's assume everything's in place and we sign the IGA and are ready to go. The installation, depending on the mid, other mid-coast towns, because this is fourteen hundred lights total that are gonna be done in the area, should be less than a month.
I, I was asking a slightly different question. When the installation is finished, and the checks have been signed and delivered for the.
Right.
Contract, how long do they wear, did they offer a warranty on that installation work for us and for the rest of the towns? Not how long it'd take to get it done, but after it's installed, like when you buy a washing machine, you get a five-year warranty.
It'd be one year.
What's the warranty?
One year.
One year.
One year for the installation workmanship.
And that includes, I, I'm just following up with Bob's question, does that mean we wouldn't be subject to this hundred and ninety-five dollars if something went wrong? That shouldn't be covered for the first year, is that right?
It depends what happens with the lights. If it's something that's, I mean, I'm thinking back to the fuse issue that I mentioned earlier over in Dover-Foxcroft, that wasn't, that was something that's going back and forth between a CMP issue and an installer's issue, so they don't know who's paying for all that. But the town does have to cover it for that time being. Now fortunately, from what I've been told, um, there are new see, there are new fuses that have been approved that are less corrosive, so that issue shouldn't be too much of a problem. But that's also a topic that I'm gonna be discussing next week about installers.
What is it that's pushed you to come to us tonight to ask for this, exactly? Why can't we put this out for another couple of weeks until you get answers to the questions which I, we've been asking?
Because.
The installation one, or?
Sorry?
Which question specifically?
Well, you wanted us to sign off on.
The investment.
Making a decision tonight between Real Term, which is not, by the way, the installer. Real Term is a consultant.
Consultant.
Because the other six towns were meeting with our group next week.
They're meeting, okay. And if, are you saying?
And they're going.
They're, they're going.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Right.
Just want to be clear.
And again, we're not, we're not fully involved until we give the check to CMP, which could be two or three months from now. And if the investment grade audit comes back and the price has skyrocketed for some unknown reason.
We're out.
Then we can pull out if we'd want. But sixty thousand has been the known figure for some.
But we still have to then pay for the inventory if we pull out.
Yes, right.
I, I agree with Jan, I think we oughta, and Max, I think we oughta go with Real Term. Bob? Is there a motion? A move? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Max, for keeping us so informed with all your literature.
So, uh, the last item on the agenda is, uh, an AD Gray discussion. I, I just thought I'd describe where we stand now, uh, and make some comments. Uh, the AD Gray subcommittees met three times, August fifth, August sixth, and August seventh. The first two meetings focused on risk assessment, and Bruce Metrick, I guess Bruce isn't, there he is, was really effective in helping us identify and prioritize potential risks associated with the project. The third meeting was with the investors, Tim Wells and Ron Phillips, and we went through our prioritized risk assessments with them. Tim Wells appeared before the planning board on the eleventh of Sept- September, and local papers have reported on that meeting. Among the issues the planning board discussed were parking, traffic, and population density. Based upon input Julie Kaiser received since Tim Wells' September eleventh planning board pre-application presentation, she and I suggested to Tim Wells that he meet with village residents and businesses. As noted earlier this evening, Tim has set a meeting at the Walderboro Public Library for October sixteenth at six P.M. And to the best of my knowledge, he sent out invitations to potentially interested attendees.
And that was a wide net.
That was a wide net.
We gave him a wide net.
Thought it gave him a long list. It's my recommendation that the subcommittee will not meet until after Tim Wells holds his meeting on the sixteenth. The expectation is that information will come to light at that meeting that could be of assistance in drafting an agreement based on Tim Wells's initial proposal. I was surprised when I read the September twenty-sixth Lincoln County News coverage of the select board's September twenty-fourth meeting, at which the AD Gray Subcommittee was also discussed. I wasn't able to attend that meeting because, uh, well, I just wasn't able to be there. So I'll comment on specific items I noted in the article that appeared in Lincoln County News. The article said, quote, "Minzy proposed adding another woman to the Subcommittee to balance its dynamic," unquote. My comment, Minzy must be aware that the Select Board fills committee positions based on best available qualifications. This is especially true for the AD Gray Subcommittee, for which we made efforts to obtain volunteers who have experience with real estate transactions. Pursuant to that effort, during the September board meeting of, on the tenth of September, I made a motion to add Saran Pine to the Subcommittee, and Minzy and Collmore voted against that motion. I quote again from the LCN article, "Minzy said past Subcommittee meetings have taken on a, quote, 'madmen vibe,' more befitting the private sector than a public meeting that falls under Maine's open meeting law." My comment, Minzy's statement is not a reflection of the vibe of the three Subcommittee meetings that have thus far been held. In my opinion, her reference to madmen was unprofessional, insulting, and unbefitting a member of Walderboro Select Board. It reflects poorly on those who volunteer to devote their time to serve on the Subcommittee and who've already made important contributions to the work of the Subcommittee. According to the Lincoln County News article, Collmore said, "I would like to see open communication within the Subcommittee. It seems to be missing some of that," unquote. I would point out that Collmore is not a member of the Subcommittee, so I have to ask, how can he comment on Subcommittee communications? Comments were made in the article about the absence of a Subcommittee Chair. I think it's fair to say that I assumed the Chair of the Subcommittee, given my position as Chairman of the Select Board. If Minzy had wanted the Subcommittee to elect a Chair, she could very easily have raised that issue during one of the two meetings the Subcommittee held on August fifth and August sixth. During the second September Select Board meeting, the Select Board formulated additional directives regarding the Subcommittee. Had I been at that meeting, I would have made the following additional motions with regard to the Subcommittee, and I make them now, and request that each be discussed and voted upon in turn. Moved, that the Select Board appoints Saran Pine as a resident member of the AD Gray Subcommittee. The Select Board confirms that Bob Butler, Maxwell Johnstone, Julie Kaiser, Bruce Metrick, Jan Minzy, and Freeman Zausner are all members of the AD Gray Subcommittee. Two, moved, that all Subcommittee meetings shall be held in executive session pursuant to one MRS A four oh five six C, Acquisition of Real Property and Economic Development. And finally, moved, that all written Subcommittee communications shall have distribution limited strictly to Subcommittee members. Contacts with the developer or investor group, verbal or written, shall be undertaken only through the offices of Walderboro's Town Manager, Walderboro's Planner, or the Chairman of the Select Board. That's my statement.
Well, I just want to add a couple things. First of all, I did not say, um, and I, I have it written, I read, I read it, um, from the paper. I did not say that the Subcommittee was, um, like a madman episode. I said the Select Board meeting, I said the prior Select Board meeting felt like I was in an episode of Mad Men. Said nothing to do, it wasn't the Subcommittee at all. And I, I did see that in the paper.
That was my, I had misunderstood.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Yeah, oh, well, I didn't, I read that, and I said, no, that's not what, that's not what I said. Uh, but I didn't think it was that big a thing to, to call and say anything. And the other. And the other, I don't recall saying that we should add another woman. I've, but afterwards, I talked about if we had one, probably a woman might be good, but it was, I didn't make any motion to say, yes, we should. And when you talked about the meeting where Clint and I voted against it, and it had nothing, and I know Saran understood that, but it had nothing to do with the person at all. It was strictly a process, the process. I was very uncomfortable with the process, and I think at our meeting, we straightened a lot of those, those questions out. I mean, the, the Board had real dialogue and conversation. It was actually, it was quite, it was quite good about that. It was basically just process. I've been, you said there were three meetings?
Fifth, sixth, and seventh.
Okay, so we had one meeting where Bruce was the facilitator.
The day before Bruce's facilitation, we decided it would be good to have Bruce-
What, to have Bruce do that. And Bruce did an excellent job. He, he basically ran that meeting, and I think we all agreed to that, and he did an excellent job with that, and I, I mentioned that, it was very good. And then we took that information, and we, um, used that when we were talking with the developer. The development is now, it's been, because it's been before the Planning Board and been in the paper, it's, it's, I'm not sure that it's a real estate, um, issue that having the public know would affect the town, which is what that, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not saying I disagree with having it in executive session, but normally that is for, to keep that information, to have that done because it would affect the town if, if the public knew. Now that it's a, it's a public, the public knows about this, and it's been in the paper and the Planning Board, it's all open. So I'm not, I, I'm not sure about that.
I just think the negotiations with the developer would be-
Well, the negoti-, yeah. I, I'm not positive that it falls under that exactly, but it doesn't really matter to me.
Well, it falls under, it falls under two things. It falls under economic development-
Right, right.
And contract negotiation.
Right, but, yeah, there, yeah, there's, there's more to those that, um-
It's very simple, Jan.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, Bob. The one thing that I was concerned about, partly the process, was that we had not discussed, we hadn't discussed anything about the Committee.
Who was the "we" you're talking about?
Well, I wasn't involved in any, I'll put it, I wasn't involved in any discussion during our meeting of how our, what the Committee should be made up of, uh, who it should be made up of, how many, any of that sort of thing. And there was no discussion about who would lead it, other than Bruce. And then Bruce wasn't at that, the next meeting, so you ran it. We really didn't have any discussion. That was the part that I found uncomfortable. And so, it bothered me when somebody from the public stood up and told me, or tried to, tried to explain to me who was supposed to be on and what the, you know, what, why, when I hadn't been involved, this was somebody else was telling me, and I thought, that's how strange is that? I'm on that Committee. And yet that had never been discussed within the Committee.
Well, the Committee doesn't determine who sits, the Subcommittee doesn't determine-
Correct.
This Board-
But to have, but to have a person from that Committee have all the, have a lot more information-
A lot more information about what, Jan?
About what went on in the Committee, about what had been decided. It was just, it was-
You were at those meetings. How could you have less information than anybody else sitting at the table?
Well, that was, that was exactly my point.
But there's not a point.
It was a point.
I mean, that's a straw, that's a straw man.
It, it-
And I'm not sure what it, what it's addressing.
Well, I'm sorry, you don't get it.
You attended all three meetings.
I did.
You commented, you had things to say directly.
And there were, then there were a number of things. There were good meetings, but there was just this one piece missing, and then, when someone-
Sorry, what piece was missing?
The piece-
Well, I think how, I think, I think how Saran got nominated.
Saran got nominated because I brought her name to this Board.
Right, right.
That's it. It's that simple.
Right, and-
There was no discussion.
Exactly, that was one, that's one of the issues.
But there doesn't need to be one for this Board to have a nominee placed before it, one who's already been interviewed, Abden and Katie interviewed.
Okay, I'm, I guess, Bob, you're missing, you're missing-
Strange person.
You're missing my point.
No, you're missing my point.
No, I, I think I understand your point, but you, you didn't get mine. And it was a part, it was communication.
What's the communicate? We, we brought Saran forward, we discussed her at this table-
Okay.
Which is where the issue is supposed to be discussed. It's not supposed to be discussed in the Subcommittee. The Subcommittee doesn't recommend who sits on the Subcommittee. This Board recommends that.
Someone on the Subcommittee did stand up here and say what qualifications the person had to have and why.
Of course, of course. What's wrong with that?
Well, I think, where did that information come from?
The gentleman is sitting right here.
And-
Bruce?
No, it wasn't Bruce, no, it was-
When would we be allowed to comment?
You may comment now if you wish.
So, Bruce Metrick and Freeman and I, and three people on here, the only members on the Board, so I, I appreciate the time to come and talk. And I'm in two other Boards in town, and there's a lot of people that are volunteering for stuff, so this is going to sound a little like a speech, but people spend their entire lives developing a reputation. When I read that article two weeks ago, I was very offended. Based on my work in the private sector, when somebody compares, and I understand how you're saying, you didn't say the AD Gray Committee, you said the Select Board-
Right.
-acted like an episode of Mad Men.
I said it felt to me like I was in the middle of-
I'm reading what was in the paper, Ms. Minzy.
Okay.
Okay, and if anybody's ever seen that show, I found that incredibly offensive, personally.
I did too.
If you've seen that show.
Yeah.
And if you said it about the Committee, the Select Board Committee, what does that reflect upon the town? Because this is the Select Board Committee. I don't see an episode of Mad Men here acting out, yet that was what we reported in the paper. Then the comment about needing another woman to change the dynamic, that led me down a whole path of things that I've seen in my his, in my career on, uh, HR issues, and I went, whoa, what's going on here? And then when I read that Mr. Collmore said, "We have a communication issue," how would he know we have a communication issue? Who did he hear that from? So, I'm sitting there and I'm going, something else is going on here. And I, I don't know what it is, but, you know, and I'm going to try to lighten it up a bit, because most of us are volunteers, there's volunteers for the, for the church, for the library, for, for the, the food bank, for the theater, okay? I'm pushing sixty-eight. I'm in the fourth quarter, hoping for an overtime, okay? I don't need this nonsense, and other people don't, especially when it gets reported in the paper. And I get very upset about that, when somebody reports, it gets reported that a Committee that I'm on is acting like an episode of Mad Men. I understand that was an error, but then-
I apologize.
Well, maybe you need to get it right.
I'll, I do my best.
Well, maybe you should get the minutes checked by somebody, because that can do a lot of damage when people throw stuff out. There was, if you knew that was wrong, we didn't see a correction, I was waiting for a correction.
I, I, you sent me an email. Oh, well, I sent it to you, so.
And you sent it in a private email.
Well, that's because I, you asked me.
Okay, so how is that open communication? And I pass those emails on to the other, to the, to the other Committee members. I'm just saying, I don't get it. I don't get what's going on, and I hope it can get sorted out, because a lot of people are going to get turned off by this kind of stuff.
I agree completely, I'm with you completely, Bruce, exactly. And that's where I, that's where I stood, feeling the same way.
We are talking past each other, Ms. Minzy. So that's all I have to say, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Bruce.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, there was miscommunication.
I apologize.
I apologize for that. I have the paper, I, I should have brought it with me tonight, that I read. I read that I felt like I was in an episode of Mad Men, and I did, I have to tell you, I really did. You know, when you're on a Committee and someone was, I hadn't said much about, because it was, I hadn't said much about the AD Gray situation, because I thought we were, because it hadn't been, uh, out in public yet, hadn't gone to the Planning Board after that, thought it was okay, so I didn't say anything. However, I heard a lot from other people. I heard that it was discussed on the pickleball court, and I thought, oh, that's interesting. I didn't say anything. The part, I guess that the hardest part was, and I think what, I, I can't really speak for Clint, but I think what he was saying was because of the conversation at the Select Board table, I think that's where he got his information, just, just from listening.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't speak for him, but-
Can we see the damage it does, though, when those words come out? The nega-, what was positive about saying that about the Select Board?
It was just a fact, and that's how it felt, and it, it just, it was very unpleasant.
Freeman wanted to say something, Jan.
My name is Freeman South, I'm a resident. Under Maine law, it's called the Freedom of Access Act.
We can't hear you down here.
Under Maine law, it's the Freedom of Access Act. And that act explicitly excludes things like a contract negotiation, because the purpose of a contract negotiation is not to publicly disclose to the opposite person you're negotiating with what your thought process is as you develop the, the parts of the contract you're negotiating. So pulling away from this just for a second, imagine that Julie had a copier contract, which can be very expensive, and she's thinking about replacing the copiers, and she realizes there's someone in the town that used to work for the federal government whose responsibility was copier contracts among part of their purview. Well, that would be a private discussion with Julie prior to coming to you, or you might even say, start that process, and they would be advising her, and it'd be a private conversation, not public, even if it was three people in the town that had that kind of experience. And it's the same thing with a real estate contract under Maine law. So while the Select Board could obviously disclose those negotiations, it's under no legal obligation to do so, and most towns in these contacts, these contracts, don't actually make them public. Now, if we think about how the process would possibly work, the Committee, and be sure I may do another sidetrack, in something important like this, the reason that there were two people on the Select Board that were part of this, with Julie and with Bruce, myself, was because it was so important, it's like in a company where there's something very important, and a Board of Directors designates two people, let's say, to work with management, because it's very sensitive, important. Now, once this first draft was negotiated with the other party, it would come back to you, and you're under no obligation to agree with any of it or parts of it, and then you in turn would actually discuss yourself which parts do you agree with, some you might say, you go back to Julie and to yourselves and say, we need to renegotiate this, because the five of us really can't agree on parts of this. And then once you have mostly business terms and some legal terms, then you finally, if you want to save money, then you might, thinking if it's a real deal, then you and the party who wants to do this deal on the other side would go to your respective lawyers. And the point of this, to have the Advisory Committee, is frankly to save money. Some companies start right away, they, they look lawyers, and almost immediately they bring their lawyers in, but it's obviously very expensive. So the purpose of the Advisory Committee is to take this knowledge with the two Select Board members, and very important, because we don't want Advisory Committee, it's only just to veer off, you know, the two of you, so it grounds the decision-making in terms of something that probably at least one of the Board members would agree with. And then with Julie's expertise, because remember, she is the Town Manager, and basically as a, as a concept, all contracts, generally speaking, go through with your delegation to Julie. And then people like Bruce and me, we simply advise and help the process, hopefully, maybe not, and then after that, hopefully, the town can have a decision through your, five of you, your expertise, and then we save money, hopefully have something that reflects the business terms and the contract terms, but it doesn't reflect what will happen October sixteenth, which is well beyond my purview, which is actually the town itself making a decision about this, which is totally different than people like myself, which is very technical. But again, the Freedom of Information Act does not require any disclosure at this point. That's the law of the state of Maine.
Thank you, Freeman.
I think, when I spoke, I spoke about two things. The first thing was how we, as a Board of Select, and how we work with Maine Municipal and their laws. That was, and, and there, because of that meeting, it sounded to me like there was some misunderstanding on how, how we operate as a public entity, as public servants. And that's why I, I had that section, and it was just basically right out of our manuals. So, and, and that's, that's how we operate. Private sector is different.
I'm not asking about the private sector, Maine law, I'd ask my lawyer, Maine law, for, yes, for bodies.
I'm not sure where that fits in. But, um, so when I spoke, I was just showing the difference, because there are people who work in the private industry who don't really understand how we operate. That was, that was what I, that was one thing. And then, when I, I felt like the Mad Men, it was, um, I felt like I was getting it from different sides, but I, I was concerned when someone on the Committee was telling me how it operates, when I was on the Committee.
You're being very unspecific, who on the Committee was telling you how it operated?
Oh, Freeman, when Freeman was talking, um, he was talking about, you know, who we got and why, and he had, he had all that information.
Who we got?
Right, who the Committee, who the members would be and why we got certain members and so on. That was-
We've already told you that.
No, that was in from-
That's what we do.
No, that-
You just said that.
Well, I, no, that wasn't, no, that was before that.
That was at the Committee me, that was at this Select Board meeting, right?
What?
When you had that conversation with Freeman.
Was, uh-
He was here.
Two ago, yeah, he was, not just today, but-
No, but that was-
That was, yeah, uh-
Two meetings ago.
Two meetings ago, yeah, yeah.
So, but I, I'm sorry, I don't understand your point. Freeman got up and spoke? I think he got up and spoke in favor of Saran being on the Committee?
No, he, well, yes, but-
Subcommittee.
Right, I, I do not have a problem with Saran, I tried to tell you that. You told me, you said I didn't.
He said you had a problem with process, but you're being terribly opaque about what you think the process is. We consulted as a Board-
I'm sorry you feel that way.
About Saran, that was the purpose of the meeting. You voted against her because-
That's not what I was talking-
Of process, but I don't know what your process is, Jan.
Okay.
I think her process was that she felt left out of the loop because the Subcommittee had a recommendation that she wasn't included.
Subcommittee did not have a recommendation, it didn't mean to make the recommendation.
It was- But that's, I think that's what she needs to know.
No, it, no, that I know, no, that I know, no, that's not exactly it. When I, I know, we've been through this before, it was, yeah, I, I understand completely. No, Bob, it was, um, I went back and looked, and when we decided to, you decided to, you wanted this Committee, and you said you would like to use the Community's expertise.
I had two people in mind that I specifically mentioned to whom I had spoken.
Right, just-
To whom I had spoken.
I'm just feeling like your, your voice is being a little bit-
You're putting it in such a way, Jan, as to obfuscate the issue. The issue is, we brought someone up for nomination, the issue was, we nominated someone to the Subcommittee who volunteered, who has an expertise that we can use, we discussed it at the Board level, and you voted against her, because-
No, I did not vote against her.
Process, well, that, the motion was, assign her to the, to the Subcommittee, and you said no.
Okay, that's not my issue, Bob. That isn't my issue. And I keep trying to tell you, but I, I don't know if I can get it. I don't know if I can explain it as well.
Say something?
Sure. It has to do with communication, and, and we're mis- It has to do with communication, and we're miscommunicating here still. I think we're going like that.
I'll be very frank with you, Jen.
I know. Bob, can I just ask you one thing?
Go ahead.
When you do this, it makes me feel like you're pointing at me. And it's on top...
This is pointing at you.
I know that. I said, "When you do this, it makes me feel like you're pointing at me." I'm gonna ask you if you would...
All right, I will try not to do this when I'm talking to you, Jen. But let me make something crystal clear after this little episode, and my working on the subcommittee with you, and I'm gonna work with you and the others who are on the subcommittee. I will not be communicating with you outside of the public arena, and I certainly will not be sending you emails about the work of the subcommittee, unless I'm copying everybody on that email. And I'm gonna limit the emails to those who are on the subcommittee. I am not going to include people who are not on the subcommittee, indeed, who are on the other side of the table.
Okay, I don't know...
Just wanna make that very clear.
I don't know that I've asked you any of those things. I don't feel like I've asked you to do any of those things. I think, I think it's a...
Make a motion, we move on.
Well, it's a matter of communication.
Talk about this, talk about this.
Communicate in public about this issue.
I think Seth has had one of the same thoughts.
Sorry, Seth.
I do.
As you all know, I'm very interested in the subject in general, meaning eighty-grade disposition of that town asset. There have been people who've been excited about doing something creative with it. I don't know much about the details of the process that you've been going through. Unfortunately, not much more than I read the paper, which is sometimes a little unreliable, unfortunately, which is why the press is. I would like to understand further what I think I understood your suggested motion was. And just to, I'll try to recapitulate it so that you can correct me if I'm wrong. You're proposing, select board vote, to keep the subcommittee's board private, in fact, secret, in executive session. All the subcommittee meetings private and non-public. Is that roughly what you're asking?
All, the motion was that all subcommittee meetings be held in executive session pursuant to one MRSA 6C, Acquisition of Real Property and Economic Development. And that's really what's required.
So my understanding of, I think it's 405A or B, public meeting laws, sounds to me from my reading to contradict that, but I won't stay the next, I can't read it to you, I don't have a little bit. What I would like to say, though, is I feel very strongly that even this conversation tonight, which sounds like it has some history I know nothing about, is a very good example of why we should not have closed, secret meetings, especially for something for the community. As important is the possibility of potentially real estate redevelopment of an asset that was sort of stranded and we don't know what to do with. It's just a very bad sign, from my perspective, about our public government and governance, that there's a concerted effort to withhold from the public the process. I understand completely, sometimes when you have nondisclosure things for contract negotiations, you must do that, that makes perfect sense, I have no argument with that. This does not sound or smell like that to me. And I, I would hope that you would not approve any such motion to conceal from the public, the public nature of the conversation for this proposed development. I think that would be a very poor idea.
Thank you, Seth, Bruce?
I think, kind of building on what Seth said, and I don't know the law, but I think... I see the issue as the discussions on the eighty-grade building should only be had when the groups are meeting. I don't care if a hundred people are in the room, okay? But the issue I'm having is, the discussions were had with everybody in the room, and there still seems to be this tension somewhere that we're not getting at. And that's not my job to solve, but that's where I said, something else is going on here. Because everybody was in the room, everybody had a chance to talk. All the time, the meetings that I've been in, the subsequent emails, nobody said boo about a problem. And then boom, it shows up in the paper. Now, maybe the paper reported wrong, but even with the words that were said, I would have chosen to use different words, that's what I'm talking about. We're talking about having a very positive thing try to happen here for the community that's gonna take another two, three, four years. This is not getting off on the right foot. And it's not positive, because in my opinion, people are saying things that they shouldn't be saying, or there's a better way to say them, unless there's something else going on and another agenda. And that might not be professional of me to say that, but I don't know where else to take it, because I am really confused. Everything's been open, transparent, and we keep coming back to the process, and the process, and the process. What process? You sent me an email that said, "We need to have norms," and I said, "Where are these norms listed?" You said, "In the MNA rules." I went, "Look, there's no norms in there, there's no word about norms." There's no word about process. There's the law, and you follow the law, and that's it. So I think we need to stop, we need to be very careful about our words that we use, when they're in public and when they can go to the paper.
I agree with what Bruce is saying, and I do agree that it shouldn't be discussed unless we're all together. I agree.
How did Clint find out about the problems?
It was just from the meeting, the last meeting we had. It was from the discussion.
I wish he was here tonight, so he could address that.
Yeah. I think it was from the, well, from the questions that people asked, that we didn't have answers, I think.
Seth, one more comment.
Just a very brief follow-up. I think Bruce has made an interesting observation and used language I would like to repeat and reinforce, so that we can think about it. I'm very concerned, as it sounds like Bruce might be, from the, just the empirical evidence, that there might be some kind of sub-agenda here. And there shouldn't be, and it should be totally public. We should all know everything we should, as citizens, need to know to make an informed decision. We shouldn't have something happen behind closed doors, like in executive session.
Thank you.
I, I...
Isn't the subcommittee supposed to be talking about the contract?
Correct.
Well, I think every...
I'm sorry.
And isn't the contract supposed to be under executive session?
I think you're...
That's what we're...
I think everybody's confusing two things. I think, I, I know what you're trying to say is that for, we shouldn't, nobody should be communicating with the developer or his liaison.
The message should be focused and...
But I think we're talking about two different things. When you make a motion, every meeting should be, there are meetings that there would be no reason to hold an executive session.
The subcommittee's been targeted, been tasked at the last meeting with only negotiating an agreement if one is to be negotiated.
Right. The negotiations themselves do, we should, because what happened is, it appeared in the newspaper, and then we had another developer express an interest. So you don't want to put anybody at a disadvantage, so those types of negotiations, those contract negotiations should be held in executive, because you don't want to give an, because you don't know what could come down the pipe.
Right.
I totally understand that. But if we're talking about concepts and things like that, that wouldn't be executive. So we'd have to come in and out of executive.
Right.
I see what you were trying to do, but I think you have to be careful.
Yes, sir.
Troy Smith, I'm from Wolfboro.
Do you wanna take the...
No, that's fine.
Just talk loudly then, so they might pick you up.
He's loud.
I just feel, two things here, I guess. I believe Julie's correct, that you should have information shared in a public setting, but when you, almost like an executive session, dealing with this board, you know, you set an agenda, and then at this point, we're gonna go into executive session, and then we're gonna talk about these two, three things that are not public information that could affect an outside contractor or somebody else. But you should be transparent to the public. Two, maybe it was just an oversight, but if I'm correct, the eighty-grade parcel in that project also has two recreation facilities. Was it an oversight to not ask somebody from the rec committee to be part of that?
We're not even close to that point yet, and it wasn't an oversight.
Well, okay, if it's on oversight, I would, in the future, I'd recommend that maybe there's a representative or our rec director that's involved since it's two parcels.
There will be a process in the agreement, if we do one, that will fully engage the public, it will be, and not just the public, departments in this town, the whole nine yards, but you have to have a base from which to start. And that base has to be discussed and negotiated with the developer. And that's why it's so important to have that public meeting on the 16th, to get the feedback to better draft the agreement, if one is to be drafted. This is not a foregone conclusion, this project in any event. I mean, we still have a lot of things to, to...
This is just the first stage, this is just the first stage.
It is, yeah.
So we have to start somewhere.
No, no, it's good.
And the contract has to be in executive session. It has to be that way. You don't want, talking about the contract to the public.
What is the word that Tim used on the paper that we're going over? It's not contract? Charter, no?
Oh, he's talking about a...
The paper that we're supposed to be working on?
Yeah, he wants an option.
What is the word? Oh, the option, okay, thank you, the option agreement, I couldn't come up with that.
It's a contract.
Right, so that's basically, that's what the board decided, I thought it might have been... I thought that the group might have, but we hadn't discussed that, done something a little bit broader. But the board...
At the last meeting, we brought that up.
Yeah, but at the board meeting last time, the board wanted it just to be on the option agreement.
And I agree with that.
That was on that, and that's...
I think that's...
And I thought that's what we discussed to start with.
Right, and that's right.
That's what we decided back in July.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't know if you wanted to go a little further. I think it's basically communication has been...
Sorry.
Can we move on?
I would like to move on, if you're ready to.
There's a motion on the table.
There were three motions on the table, but haven't been seconded yet. And I'll go through them one by one. Move that the select board appoints Saran Pine as a resident member of the eighty-grade subcommittee. The select board confirms that Bob Butler, Maxwell Johnstone, Julie Kaiser, Bruce Metrick, and Jan Minzy, and Freeman Zausner are all members of the eighty-grade subcommittee. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Just curious, a question that I had earlier. Have, is this subcommittee, is it, the subcommittee, is it fluid in number? Or are you looking at a, we haven't discussed this, at a specific number of people? Or is that something that you consider fluid?
If an expert walks in the door tomorrow and says, "I wanna be on your committee," and he brings something to the table that none of us have, and says, "I'm volunteering," are you gonna say no? That's the question. I'm not, why set a number, an arbitrary number? This, all we're doing is discussing the contract.
Okay, just...
That's all we're doing.
Just tone, just pleasant tone. I was just asking a question, had, did you have any thoughts about the number of people on here? And did you want the group, I mean, you've brought all the names forward. Are you, have you, are you thinking maybe of some of the people in the group bringing names forward?
At this point, no, nobody's brought names forward.
Well, right, that hadn't been discussed, that maybe we should. We had a group, and I thought that was the group, maybe. I didn't know, because we hadn't discussed it.
I thought it was the group as well.
Right, and then, so if we have other people, then other people in the group might bring those names forward.
I think that's something you look at on a one-on-one basis.
Okay, that's why I was just... Yeah?
Is there, but there is a second to the motion, any further discussion of the motion?
So we have two, we're doing two together?
One motion.
One motion that includes adding a person...
As a member of the board.
Confirming the rest of the members.
And you're just confirming, that's...
That's all we're confirming. All of us are on the subcommittee.
Yeah.
All in favor? The second one, we may want to massage the language a little bit on this. The second one was moved that all subcommittee meetings shall be held in executive session pursuant to one MRSA 405-6C, Acquisition of Real Property and Economic Development.
I think we need to take the word "all" out of there, because it's "all" is not going to be in executive session. Only where contracts are being discussed should we be in executive session.
I, for example, a workshop that we did.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so it reads, "Move that subcommittee meetings for contract discussions only." Only. Shall be held in executive session pursuant to one MRSA, et cetera, et cetera.
Can I just say something?
Yep.
I just think it's ridiculous to do a motion to make us follow the law that we already follow. But that's just me, I'm done.
Thank you.
If it makes everybody feel better, that's fine.
I think it needs to be clarified.
I guess it does.
Marcel, clarify it.
They can be crazy.
Any discussion about that motion?
I don't think there was a second.
Yes, there was.
Yes, there was.
I'm sorry, Mr....
All in favor?
I don't really care.
Thank you.
I agree with you, Julie, it was, I don't know where that came from.
Move that all written subcommittee communications shall have distribution limited strictly to subcommittee members. Contacts with the developer/investor group, verbal or written, shall be undertaken only through the offices of Waldaborough's town manager, Waldaborough's planner, or the chairman of the select board.
I just have one problem with that. Technically... Max and I, I mean, we do that. I think then you're walking into the same situation with communication issues that you had if you're on that list.
I second that.
The problem is that, at the moment, I get the calls. I know you get some too, but I get them as well.
But as a member of the committee, you're already a member of the committee.
Sorry, I can't talk to you?
But I don't see the harm in having the members of the committee be able to talk to the developer if they have a question.
I don't think that's, I don't think that is advisable, having different people talking in different language about different issues that are a matter of contract.
So...
And that is in our guidelines.
It's all about discipline.
It is in our guidelines.
But I just...
We cannot do that, as a board, we cannot do that.
So if one person talks to the developer...
To the subcommittee.
Then is that person going to share that information with the entire subcommittee?
Absolutely.
Okay, that, that's, that's, that's a good thing.
It's more of a chain of command than anything.
Well, it's the sharing of the communication, which is...
If anything should be, if anything should be told to somebody else, it should be voted on in the subcommittee to elect one person to do that.
I think it should be decided at this level, because the other two people work with the town. And they need to know, there needs to be a fluidity of conversation, at least, those people.
I, the developer contacted me once, had to do with some information on the town rental stuff.
Send him to Julie.
Well, it, I could, but then Julie would have to ask me the question back, because it...
Has the motion been seconded, is it open for discussion? I didn't hear a second.
It's open for discussion.
Yeah, it's great. I think, I don't know of any other committee in town of any description or a board whose minutes are not absolutely public, except for minutes of executive session, I don't even know if you keep them.
Not supposed to keep.
Not supposed to.
Not supposed to take notes in an executive session.
I don't know, because that's executive session.
You can't even take notes in an executive session.
So, that's the way with both boards, I think it would be an extremely bad precedent, and send the wrong signal to people interested in this subject, that it was all the conversation with the committee, this isn't just contract negotiations. It's happening behind closed doors and will not be shared with the public. That's a very, very bad precedent to set, and I hope you don't do that.
I think you've learned, you have to be careful on, when you're, when we get to that point, and hopefully we have multiple people who wanna come in with great plans, but now you're gonna be talking about values, and bids, and offers, and so on. That can't go public.
No.
Absolutely not.
Well, and you have to, and the conflict is, you have to write it down. You have to have meeting minutes, but you can't, you can't advertise that to the public, because, because, you know, contemporaneously, I mean, because, because then you're telling the competition what's going on.
Sorry, let's address your, address your comments to the chair.
I'm sorry.
Address your comments to the chair.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's complete misreading of the book for the public law and public policy execution. When we went to the, when the renewable energy subcommittee invited bids, well, not with that, but with our... When we went to the, when the renewable energy subcommittee invited bids, what I was, for the landfill, it was all right. It was all public. Everything that we asked for, everything that we received was explicitly public so that we would foemen competitive bidding. That was the entire point. I'm sorry, to the chair.
Thank you.
I, I think it's, it's just an extremely poor precedent. I don't know, anywhere else it's done, I understand the contract-specific need, but the conversation about whether we should do this, and the rough parameters even, that, that should not be private.
Anybody else?
Katie?
I don't think we're saying that.
Right, I don't think.
But I think what we're saying is, anything held in executive session stays in executive session. We can all agree on that.
That's not what that said.
That's not what the motion said, I don't think at all.
I think, right, it's, it's his last, read that again.
The last one isn't about executive session.
Whatever you just, the one that we're talking about.
It's about subcommittee communications.
Yes.
Between the subcommittee and the developer investor. And those are verbal or written, are undertaken only through the offices of the Waldaborough town manager, the Waldaborough planner, or the chairman of the select board.
That's what I was going to say, I didn't have a chance to say what I was going to say.
Please.
When you have a subcommittee, they discuss things. I think it should be up to one person to let it go out in public if that's the way it wants to go. But one person should do it. I don't think, I don't think anybody on the, on the subcommittee should be able to express what you're talking about to anybody.
Well, I don't think that's what.
This isn't about public communication.
I think what the problem is, is becomes, who's allowed to talk to the developer? That's what this boils down to.
That's what the issue is, yeah.
Right.
And the whole idea is to keep it consistent and not to have.
Yes.
Because then they can play.
Yep.
And you don't want them playing.
Yep.
You wanna have discipline in your discussions.
Yep.
That's the whole point.
I think so, especially in something like this.
Yeah.
So have people on the subcommittee, are they having discussions with the developers?
When the developers.
Has that been an issue?
When the developers are meeting with the subcommittee, as we did on August seventh.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody obviously has.
No, I don't mean that, I mean contacting.
Max and I talk to him quite frequently.
I have to speak with him for planning board and what appeals related issues.
Absolutely, yeah.
But there's nothing that rises to the level of a different, I'm not, I don't, I've not felt from Tim that I'm getting a different story than Max gets. We get the same story.
And that's the whole point.
And whenever I do hear that Tim spoke with Julie, we, we relay the same message back, just to make sure we're in the same loop.
Yeah.
So that's why, I'm just asking that, if, if you're bringing this up, has there been an issue with that? Has that been a problem?
Yes, it has been a problem.
Okay. So people are contacting the developer?
Copied, a person on the subcommittee copied, sent an email intended for the subcommittee to somebody who was sitting on the other side of the table. That should not happen.
No.
Okay, we're talking about, I'm contacting Tim?
No.
Oh, okay.
Okay, could you read that one more time?
Move that all written subcommittee communications shall have distribution limited strictly to subcommittee members. I'm talking about written communication here, okay? Contacts with the developer investor group verbal or written shall be undertaken only through the offices of Waldaborough's town manager, Waldaborough's planner, or the chairman of the select board. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
So any written communication with the contractor has to come through me or Max?
Yeah, or me, but I would not. I'm sitting with you and Max, I mean, that's how it would work. But if he calls me.
Yeah.
And he raises an issue and says, "Well, I talked to Julie last week, and she said this." I would want to sit down with you to make sure that that was an accurate statement. And then, when the subcommittee meets, we'd have these conversations here, which is what they are.
Maybe the better way to do this, there's more than one way to skin a cat, I hate to use that term, because I really like cats. But maybe he should just copy all of us. If he's gonna communicate, communicate with the entire subcommittee. No?
I think that's a bad idea.
Why?
Because emails like that can be misfiled, missent, include people who shouldn't be included because they hit reply all and didn't mean to.
But that, I'm just gonna say this, because I can't, I can't. That, that, that's a daily occurrence in my life.
Yeah, but you don't negotiate contracts for eighty-grade every day of your life.
No, but I, I do a lot of really sensitive things. I, I, I guess my, my thing is, is that, again, we're legislating law again. I, I, I know where you're trying to get, I'm just uncomfortable with getting there like that, now that I'm really thinking about it. I'm sorry, I just think that.
All right, we've got the two motions approved. What I would suggest is that we, I'd want me to table this until the next meeting.
You already got a motion on the table.
Yeah, I, I gotta, I'm not even sure you could do that.
You already got a motion on the table.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Let it go there.
It's not that it's, I'm just not sure. My spidey senses is going woo.
Yeah, well, we need to figure that out. But I, I, I'm making the point, it's important, if you're negotiating as a group, to stay as a group.
Right.
And to have tight discipline, and not to screw things up.
Right.
Because someone picks up the phone, in whatever mood they are, and calls me, and, or anybody on the subcommittee, Bruce, or Freeman, or Saran.
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
It just shouldn't happen.
It shouldn't happen, I just, I, I'm not, let's figure out a different vehicle to get there in.
Fine, I'm happy to do that. I withdraw the motion, and we'll figure out a different vehicle.
Have Katie withdraw her second.
I really would like it to be a Corvette.
Sorry, Katie, do you withdraw your second?
Yeah.
I withdraw the motion, thanks, Ed. Agenda items for the next meeting?
Obviously this.
Fire department.
Fireworks.
Yeah, fireworks, that's what I mean, fireworks ordinance.
Bob?
I'm sorry, Seth.
Would it be premature, referring to the efficiency main, the E B second proposal? In fact, the, the distribution wasn't quite right, there was a proposal, grants were made. And I just received the same thing, probably you did, about the second round of proposals, which are due very soon, November twelfth.
Right.
I personally, and I think you are very interested in seeing the town do something, was cast, nobody in Midcoast did anything, from Brunswick to Bellbass, so we still have the potential to be the hot spot, if you will. I personally, as a businessperson in town, would like to offer to host, maybe in committee, in cooperation with the town, a joint grant application before November twelfth deadline, to put one in the municipal parking lot, behind the taxion building. And so it would draw people downtown. I'd like that to be on the agenda, that's gonna be, is that, can I suggest that item?
I'm happy, would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Katie?
Next agenda, I would like to put down my gazebo project presentation.
Okay. Anything else? We have one other thing. We have one other thing we wanted to.
Personnel policy.
Personnel policy, thank you.
That's only if we're not gonna spend an hour talking about other things. And it's in a written form, so you guys can mark it up, the personnel policy. We have Bill Brook.
Okay. So is there a motion to convene an executive session?
So.
Second.
For seven to four oh five six F.
Yes.
Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?